Anyone present who, after being advised, persist in discourious or hostile manner, which may disrupt the meeting, will be asked to leave. At the end of the meeting, time will be reserved for public comment on any issues or concerns you may have. Please remember to keep your comments concise and limited to three minutes. Finally, the open comments section is not an opportunity for you to make inappropriate comments about or personally attack council members or town officials. Again, all participants are required to maintain a high level of civility, respect and courtesy for everyone present. Any participant who, after being advised, persist in discourious or hostile manner, which may disrupt this meeting, will be asked to leave. This is your opportunity to contribute to the community and assist in the council in addressing the issues that are important to the town. So, we've got one resolution and one ordinance tonight. We will call for the motion on each one of those, and then after it's seconded, we'll open it up for public comment, at which time you'll have to come up to the podium to state your name and address. This is not a forum for debate, and we're not going to have open comments, except for during ordinances and resolutions, and then at the end of the meeting, you'll be able to have three minutes. That being said, our first order of business is to appoint a temporary deputy clerk. So I will make a motion, let's see, make sure I read this right. Motion to suspend the rules in re- resolution 2025-8 by title only.
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve. Would you read that, please?
Read.
It's the...
Oh, the title?
Yes, just the title.
Okay, a resolution approving the appointment of temporary deputy clerk treasurer by the clerk treasurer of the town of Dayton, State of Indiana.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and adopt...
Did we actually vote to allow her to do that? We had a motion in the second, but we didn't vote.
Excuse me, you're absolutely correct. Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve.
Carla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rocky?
What do we need, we have...
Steve?
Yes.
Resolution is passed.
And I think that's all we need, for a resolution, that's all we need.
You need one read. I think it was unclear for the record whether you were voting on the motion to suspend the read by title only, so my suggestion would be to go ahead and read the actual, or to have a vote on the actual resolution of appointment. So I'll make a motion that we vote on the resolution of appointment. I guess before we do that, we should have public comment? Have you had a second? Or, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve. Do we have any public comment? Do we have any council comment?
This is just for this meeting, is what I understand is...
This is only for this meeting. Right, so I don't understand why we need to do that. We've had town clerks in this meetings before. Why do we need to have a deputy clerk?
Just to comply with the state statute. What it takes.
There's a state statute that requires that we have a clerk on at a meeting?
Yes, and this is the procedure that you use in order to fill it.
Okay, motion made by myself and seconded by Steve.
Carla, how do you vote? Mark?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Okay, motion, motion. All right. Now, our order of business is the second reading for the annexation of Janic property into the town of Dayton. And since this is the second reading, Eric, do we, do I do the motion to suspend the rules again?
I don't think you ever need to. I don't think you need to suspend the rules because you already have the ordinance in front of everybody. I understand that there are some overly formalistic folks that would want to do that. I don't think it's necessary. If you feel like you want to do that, that's fine. I would go ahead and do the same procedure and ask for a motion to suspend the read by title only, but again, there's no problem doing it, it's just extra that I don't believe is necessary.
All right. So if you don't need to do it in this case, then what should, what procedure be?
It would be just to pass on second reading ordinance 2025-9.
Make a motion to pass on second reading ordinance 2025-9, an ordinance of the town council of Dayton, Indiana, annexing certain territory into the town of Dayton, Indiana, Baker Farms West, annexation Janic. Motion made by myself and seconded by Rocky. Do we have any public comment? Approach them. Come up here and state your name and address.
It's Ron Coler, Shady Lane. Where was this advertised, anyway? And where do you have to legally advertise it? I never saw anything, a lot of people haven't seen anything.
It was advertised in the Journal Courier.
Wasn't, is that the only place you have to advertise it?
Yep, it's the only option we got these days.
Well, it could be on our website or something, you know, advertise so the town people can at least know about it, but... Second question, is this area, where exactly is this area? Is this right west of Baker's Farm, right across the street from that tree line over to 375? Or does it go south of 375? Just, should I answer it?
No, I'll answer. It is, it borders 375 and Dayton Route, right across the street from Baker Farms.
And how many acres is that?
It's approximately 53 acres, I believe.
So there'll be approximately another 110 houses or so.
109, actually.
Okay. So it's going to pass, but this is the same deal that several years ago at the church in front of 167 people, you guys implied, after question after question, you implied that you would never go, you would not be going across the street, when you were asking fatterfully about it, if you had options to buy it, or whatever, first try to refusal, and your lawyers, you guys sat up there and said, "No, we're just waiting for this." So this is how it works. It's going to be run through, it's going to be run through behind the scenes, half-hidden, and then the next step, they'll go south of 375, so...
Can you explain?
So all of the way, excuse me, talking. So all, you're going to end up annexing 200, 198 acres, so you'll have about 550 houses. The town of Dayton is 526 houses, or used to be, so you're going to make another town of Dayton out there, is what you're going to do.
Is that true? I don't think you need to be harassing him if you want to do this.
I'm not harassing him, I'm just asking a simple question because we live here, and it'd be nice to know when a builder comes into this, sir, it'd be nice to know when a builder comes into this town to have the facts, if you're going to vote on it, at least know how many, when we voted the first time, I don't think anybody really realized that there's going to be a humongous amount of houses out there. So at least, if you vote and you still want it, that's fine, but at least know what the truth is, and don't let an out-of-town builder come in and tell the wrong thing or bully. Okay? You want to answer something now?
This has all been advertised, it's been, it's been put in the paper, and all the information has been there if you ever care to look for it.
All right, okay, good. Job well done.
Thank you.
My name is Ryan Mudd, I'm an art test lawyer for Janic and MNC Development. This is, as you all know, the fourth consecutive town council meeting that we've attended. The purpose of the annexation is simply to annex the 53 acres into the town of Dayton. You're not approving a rezone, you're not approving a subdivision, you're not approving 100 houses being built. The next step after this is approved would be for our office and for Greg to file a petition to rezone the property. That would result in two more public meetings, so we're up to six now. After that, there would be a subdivision which would include public meetings, which I think that gets us to eight public meetings, so any suggestion or bullying or trying to force things through without transparency and the public involvement is simply not true, and I think you all understand that, but I just wanted to agree with that point.
So, are we doing council questions, comments now?
Yes.
So, I guess maybe I misunderstood. My fault. So the rezone has not occurred.
No.
So we're going to approve an annexation into Dayton without knowing what your rezone is going to be?
That is the procedure.
And if it's not annexed, if we went to rezone it now, it would go to the county commissioners, so we wouldn't be coming to you for approval, we'd be going to the county commissioners for approval. As I explained on Baker Farms East, the three steps of the development, the annexation, the rezone, the subdivision, the annexation should be the least controversial of the three because we're asking to come to you for future requests. So by approving the annexation, we then have to come to you for approval of the rezone. Without the annexation, you never see us again. We'd be going to the county commissioners for that.
Right, it gives us control.
Correct.
And so what will the rezone be?
It would be R1, R1 rezone, I think it's A now, A to R1.
And refresh my memory, what is R1?
Single-family residential 75-foot lots, I believe, is the, the same, the same as what Baker Farms is currently.
Correct.
And that's the intent, you're not going to change what your rezone is going to be? It's going to, you're going to stick with R1?
Yeah, we've provided a conceptual layout at previous meetings showing the single-family subdivision, which would have to be an R1. Thank you, Ryan.
Tyrone Taylor, 734 Wall Street, Dayton. As for the rezone, there's an ordinance where they have to do R1 because you have, like, they had to go through like a lot of hoops last time, which is the 10,000 square foot lot, and I think last time Baker Farms actually went above and beyond the size of lots, we had to farther setbacks, are we still going to be trying to stick to those same regulations or just more setbacks and all that, or is that just too far down the line even?
If you'd like to respond.
Sure. Yeah, the, first of all, the acres in the subdivision compared to Baker Farms East, okay, is almost identical number of acres, okay, with the same number of lots, so the lot sizes are going to be approximately the same. They're going to be nice, big lots, just like Baker Farms, okay? And so, and we'll present those, you know, in the rezoning, you know, we'll show that again. But yeah, they're going to be beautiful lots, and it's going to be a subdivision with the same style houses, same sized lots, generally, okay, as Baker Farms. It'll be beautiful.
Yeah, because I'm pretty sure you can't do anything in the town of Dayton that's not R1 right now unless you guys do a variance and change those rules, but they've been pretty few minutes since I think Deerfield. I think part of Deerfield might not be R1, I think R1, like the dash with the next smaller size.
M and A.
Yeah, R1A.
And the lot sizes in Baker Farms are about like eight feet wide, okay, and generally every single one of these are 80 feet wide, unless there's an odd situation on a corner or something like that. But yeah, 80-foot wide lots, just like Baker Farms.
Which is greater than required by R1 standards.
It's much larger.
No.
Right, much larger.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Sir, you've already had your time. Anyone else?
I didn't have in three minutes.
You had your time.
Is this being recorded, sir?
Yes, it's being recorded. Anyone else? Council comment? All right. Call to vote, please.
Carla, how do you vote?
I'll vote yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Motion passed. All right. Next thing is the Market Street CCMG. I got Colin's name down here, but I'll, I brought Colin in to answer any additional questions. So, at the last meeting, I informed everybody after the meeting that we would be having to give back some of the grant money if we didn't do the state-approved paving on the west side of Market Street, and it looks like that's probably going to be an about the amount of $12,000. And so...
You, did you aware of Colin's here?
Yes, yeah, I knew you were there. I said I brought Colin in to be able to answer any questions, but did any of the board members have anything to ask him about that? So after I did that, Steve said, well, this is information that he wasn't aware of before, and I hadn't, and obviously I hadn't thought about it prior to that because I thought it was going to pass. And so then at that point, he said, you know, we probably should talk about it. So I wanted to find out what the, what the actual cost to the town were going to be for doing those two sections. And the section for the cost to the town would be $2,434.75 for the area that is just north of Combat Cookies, and then for the area south of Combat Cookies along Market Street, the cost is going to be $1,822.44. So, and then I sent another email out after I sent that and explained that you guys could do a reconciliation vote if you wanted to. I cannot, I cannot make the motion, and I cannot second the motion. So at this point, if the three of you are interested in doing anything, you can, and that's pretty much where we're at right now.
So the only question I have is, when we're talking about, we're talking about, we're just returning money to do this?
Well, yeah, we'll consider that an underrun. We may do the asphalt portion of that project, so you'll underrun that.
So there's not money we're having to actually lay out, it's money that they gave us, we need to, we gotta modify.
Correct.
I don't see any reason to change.
Little was done last month, and I haven't taken one, so...
I don't see a reason to change. Okay. That settles it. Thank you, Colin. All right. Do you need to do anything else, Mark?
No, that's all.
You just like to talk.
I get it. All right, since Leah's not here, we'll run the utility service board meeting.
You're going to do Rachel.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rachel.
Oh, yeah. I was going to clang. So, we just wanted to do music under the gazebo again. We got just quick notes to, we're going to see if we can do, play music four months, once a month, and have a food truck and ice cream truck, and we got three other musicians in a, well, we're not getting more musicians, see if anybody is open to, we'll keep it going for more. And we made a flyer we can put up, we want to try to advertise more. We want to, we'd like to keep doing it, we feel like hopefully more people will come out the longer we, the more we do it.
That's very nice.
Yeah, that's nice. Yeah, I think, I think it's great that you wanted to do this.
Absolutely.
Music was wonderful last year. And hopefully we can start getting more of a turnout for people. But I'd like to make a motion to allow them these, these four dates for doing the music under the gazebo.
I'll second that.
Carla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Steve?
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I have one more, just kind of question, so, and I don't know if it needs to be decided tonight, so we have, so obviously I'm playing for free, I know I'm under the gazebo. The other musicians, do you have about a cost? I think when we were looking at the cost, it comes out at about 340 from when we added those up for this four-month series. Last year, for the two times that we did it, we did pay out of our own pocket, and I don't know if it'd be possible to have some sort of like funding from the town to help support that, and if that has to be decided there, we can talk about it later time, I don't know.
I guess I didn't know about that until just...
No, no, we can...
Obviously, if you can, let's let us talk about it more.
Talk about it later, yeah, and I get it.
If possible.
If possible, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it makes sense, seems fair, but let's figure that out.
We're super excited, we love music and he loves to play, so either way...
Yeah, either way, we'll be good to play and...
Yeah, we just wanted to ask...
And if need be, yeah, we'll pay, pay our costs.
I'm sure we'll, I'm sure we'll figure something out, even if we take some donations or something, we'll figure something out.
Would it be possible to just get these back? And we're going to use it to advertise a Trishid Redbird and just surround the town.
You're going to leave us one to put in the window, right?
Yeah. Thank you.
Nice block. Do you, can you just, can you email this to me?
Sure.
Apparently you got it on your computer.
Yeah, yeah.
Just email it to me, and then we'll have it, and I'll put it on the website.
Okay, yes, I'm good. Yeah, anywhere, yeah, I'll mail it to you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we thought it was fine.
You want just a copy?
Yeah, I'll make sure it gets up.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
What's your, what's the next one? Rachel, what's your husband's name?
Brian.
Brian?
Yeah. Brian.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Next thing is utility service board meeting. Do we have anything for us?
I cannot have anything for the questions, I'd be happy to try and address them, anything.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion that we accept the adjustment report for the month of April.
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Carla, she got in first.
Carla, how do you vote? Mark?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
No old business. Any public comment?
Do we need to allow something?
In the next meeting, you guys are going to be talking about my land, I understand, and probably doing something with it, and God knows what. Will I be able to discuss that before or after everything's decided and after you guys talk about it? Or will I, because it's my property, can I talk about it and help in the discussion?
We're, we're talking about the utility service board meeting right now, Ron.
Well, that's got to do with utilities, Mark, and this is a utility meeting, so that is utilities, right? So I ask a question, will I be able to talk about utilities?
You've actually made an assumption, and I'm not sure your assumption is correct.
Yeah, all right. The second thing, before my three minutes is up, I would again like to thank the board for having the guts to stand up and not pay the private parking lot at the cost of tens of thousands of dollars that is owned and was voted on before by the president of our board, which seems to me seems ought to be as illegal as hell. Every board for 35 years that I've been up here with John Swift, everybody, we all rescused ourself when it came to voting personally, and we didn't use our stature in office or our position in office to try to get something free. And my suggestion was, if you want such a nice entrance to town, maybe you ought to do something, you've been 15 months now, you crucified my brother, you harassed him, and you charged him, and yet over here, you haven't done anything.
I need to stay on subject.
Okay, well, that's the subject, it has to do, but on your street, maybe you should have paid it to begin with if you wanted to pay so much.
All right, any other public comment? Any council comments? Steve?
Yeah, I'd like, I don't know if everybody knows what's happened in the past, but we had a fairly large water main break, if you're still back, and I want to thank Mark and Kirk, who did an outstanding job of getting that plus out there to get the thing dealt with, and we were able to get it patched up in the property I went by earlier today, and Alice has been out and poured new concrete and repatched the grass and made it look, you know, it will look nice once it's all done. But I want to thank you guys for getting that taken care of, especially Kirk, who put a ton of work into chasing down valves and everything else, so I appreciate that. I wanted to make sure it was on the record.
Rocky? Carla? I'd like to add that Scott was out there the whole time.
Sue, sorry.
As well. So I guess that's what I wanted to also talk about. We got the bill for that water main break repair, $22,265.57. Now, Kurt had been out looking for valves, and if we'd have known where all the valves were at, then this cost, my guess would have been at least half that, maybe less. We would have, we would have been able to resolve this problem much quicker, and we would have only had to have a boil order for six houses instead of the entire town. So the question in my mind is, why did we not know where the valve was at? Okay, it's on, it's on the map, but it appears it possibly that that valve is underneath a sidewalk. And, you know, I really think that in the past, that all this stuff should have been located and known where it was at. And instead of spending time supervising pumpkin patches and all the others, all the other things, the important things in this town should be looked at first. And we've just got done doing all, getting all of the water valves that we know are locations, GPS, all of our fire hydrants, GPS, everything, we're finding out where everything is in this town, and we're going to maintain it, we're going to make sure that anything that happens in the future, as long as we, as long as I've got any control over any of this, we're going to know what's happened first, that's going to be our priority, and then we'll play, then we'll play after that. So that's, that's all I got to say about that. All right.
Public comment, John?
I'm sorry, sir, you missed the, you missed the, sir, I'm sorry, but public comment's over. You can, you can speak about it at the end of the meeting if you want. At the end of the town board meeting, which we're going to start right now. Attorney, have anything for this?
I do not.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the allowance docket for the month of April in the amount of $33,322.48.
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself and seconded by... Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve.
Carla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Motion, Jerry?
Just changing, I'm just gonna pay attention. I got it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the claims docket, uh, the May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five claims docket in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. Uh, but I've got a couple things I wanna talk about on that. So, first off, Steve, uh, I hadn't gotten out there in the last few days. The cement, the sidewalk is now poured there?
Concrete's down, they've gone in, re-leveled the dirt, seeded it, stratted.
So, uh, you were per, whoever would know, so does it look like it's, uh, we should go ahead and pay that now?
I, I don't know what else I can add, it looks all done to me.
I, okay, I, that was one of the things I was gonna say, that we withhold it until that is done, but apparently it's, it's done, so we don't need, we don't need to withhold that.
No, it looks good to me.
Okay, the only other thing I wanna withhold is, uh, I wanna go ahead and pass, go ahead and pass the claims docket. I suggest we pass the claims docket. But I wanna hold this, uh, warrant number one-six-seven-one to C.B. Burke, the amount of six hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, I asked them for an itemized, itemized amount for the school's parking lot, uh, work that they did on that, so we can charge that to the school. And, um, I've emailed them several times asking them to send that to me. Uh, I think Lori has, was on vacation until yesterday, and so it may just not have gotten done today or yesterday. But I would, I was, uh, I would suggest that we pass this claims docket for the full amount and just withhold warrant sixteen-seventy-one until we get the information that we need.
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve.
Carla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the April appropriation report, the bank reconciliation fund report, and the revenue report.
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve.
Carla? Carla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Passed.
Make a motion that we approve the, uh, four-fifteen-twenty-five public hearing, the four-fifteen-twenty-five utility board meeting, and the four-fifteen-twenty-five town council meeting minutes. Motion made by myself and seconded by Rocky.
Carla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we'll be no, put the treasurer report tonight. Uh, do we have anything, if there are plans, need reported?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, Kurt, you got anything?
Uh, the community center gas meters, I got a call from them, they'll be removed next week, so should be able to get that on demolition soon. They finished up the ridge cap on the shed yesterday, and they just emailed me up tonight, so can you approve that for two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to have that paid, or is that?
I think it's gonna have to wait until this meeting.
Street sweeping went well, was done today, um, Atlas, they finished up and talked about that. Um, when do you want the flags, when does that usually get put out? For Memorial Weekend and?
If we can, yeah, so you gotta get a chance.
Yeah, we can get that this week. ME Simpson, they got the meter pits, GPS, there was four hundred and one pits. The water valves, the GPS, there was a hundred and twenty-one valves. They did the hydrants, there was eighty-eight hydrants. There's still seven valves that are missing yet, can't find yet, or working on it. Um, there was a total of, let's see here. There was more water valves found that were closed down here on Harrison and thirty-eight, Republican and thirty-eight, Jefferson and Conjunction, Ohio Street and Jefferson. That leaves a total of five of them that were half-open and seven that were closed through town. So, um, and they did the hydro, the flushing and testing of the hydrants, they said the, the pressure and the flow was pretty, pretty good.
And we've opened all those, right?
Yeah, they're all open now.
The ones that he's been, except, we don't know about the ones yet.
So the other seven are.
The other seven that's missing, we don't know.
Yeah, we're not sure yet, and then, but, uh, so, yeah, that's it, any questions?
Thank you, Kurt.
Thanks, Kurt. Police report?
Good evening. Um, the first thing I wanna talk about was, um, the majority of the personal injury accidents that we investigate happen at the interstate, at the two stoplights there. And the major problem is that people are, um, failing to yield the right-of-way to oncoming vehicles, primarily eastbound traffic that is turning left or north to get on the ramps, both northbound and southbound. And our lights that are up there, which are maintained by the state and NDOT, there is a turn light to turn left, a green arrow for each, each of those, um, intersections and ramps. And after it goes off of the green arrow, it turns into a green light. And in my opinion, this is the cause of some confusion, which contributes to some of the problems with, with these, these accidents. So when we see the accidents, they're actually pretty serious there. I know Mark came up on one a few months back. Basically, you're pretty much either a right angle or a head-on collision there when this happens. So I think people, as they travel around Tepanoo County and other areas, the majority of our lights go from green to a caution-yellow turn to either a red or they stay a caution-yellow. Ours just, it just goes from a green arrow to a green light. So a lot of the people that we interview after these accidents, you know, we, we ask them, well, did you have the right-of-way? Well, yeah, I had a green light. Well, having a green light is not the same as having a green arrow. A green may proceed and turn in front of oncoming traffic. A green light means that you must give the right-of-way to oncoming traffic. So I sent a letter to NDOT, took pictures, and explained the situation, plus, um, referred to the number of serious injury accidents that we've had there. And they sent me a letter back stating that those lights are on a work order list this year to be changed to address those problems. So I don't know what, there's several options they could do, some, some of your lights will actually have a sign that says, you know, oncoming traffic, you must yield to oncoming traffic, in addition to either a yellow, um, flashing light or even some turn red and don't allow you to turn, period. That would be my preference, but I was, um, happy that they, they, they do address and look at what we're sending them if we do have a problem, and, um, they are going to look at that problem. And hopefully, probably won't alleviate that problem of people failing to yield because people are in a hurry and not paying attention, but maybe it'll help, so, just wanted to report that to you. And the second thing I wanted to talk about was a parking problem that I have had to deal with for, for many years. And in particularly, it is the parking of boats, trailers, recreational vehicles, campers, things like that, on, on streets. Um, we don't see it hardly ever in the old part of town because, um, we don't allow parking on the streets. But on those streets that have curbs and gutters, where we do allow on-street parking, that can potentially be a problem. And I have addressed that, uh, throughout the years, and what I mainly use ordinance-wise to, um, get people to move is we have two sections in our ordinance, and, and both basically say this, this same thing, is that on a travel portion of the roadway, you can't stand or park in such a manner that would obstruct traffic. Now, this is kind of discretionary on my part, is what is the travel part of a roadway? You know, there's not lines stating where parking is, and we all know that there's places in Deerfield that, you know, it's, it's tight, you know, if there were cars parked on both sides, even small cars, you know, one would preferably have to give way to another oncoming vehicle to get around. And that's generally not too much of a problem for smaller vehicles if you're patient enough. But the problem we run into, if you've got a nine-foot-wide pontoon boat and trailer sitting on the street, or you've got a, you know, a thirty-five-foot fifth-wheel camper or something like that. Like I said, I've had a few of these instances pop up where I have used this as my justification for having them move these, and I haven't had to cite anybody. But as typically happens when you do any kind of code enforcement, a knee-jerk reaction is the person who's in violation wants to drive around town and point out all the other areas that aren't, that do, that have, are doing the same thing. They're, they're parking on the street. There's two or three areas where, uh, people have parked trailers and stuff related to their business for, you know, many years. Uh, Peyton Drive is one example, the gentleman has a business on that street. But it's in the middle of the street, Peyton Drive's not a major thoroughfare like, say, Harrison would be or Clifty Falls. So I typically, you know, overlook that because it's not as much of a dangerous consideration. And there's other areas where I've had some parked, uh, like, uh, dump trailers, Tana Maxx Dump Truck, or like the, the town has, parked on or near a cul-de-sac. I would ask that gentleman to move it, and had to do so several times. But yet they point out, well, there's other cul-de-sacs where those trailers park, and you don't do anything about that. And I'm gonna use Mr. Swift as an example, you know, for years, he's parked his car trailer on his street, but he's, you know, there's only two people that use his cul-de-sac, and both of his neighbors will at times park either a small camper or, like I said, the race trailer on his cul-de-sac. Haven't got any complaints, it's not hurting anybody, it's not a major thoroughfare, but if we were to pass something that prohibited, um, specifically, um, recreational vehicles, um, boats, campers, trailers, utility trailers, box trailers, enclosed trailers, it would be harder for me to not do it town-wide as opposed to singling out certain sections. So what I'm asking you to consider, and up for con, con, this discussion at this time, is possibly looking into adding that wording to our parking ordinance to keep these types of vehicles from being parked on the street. And bear in mind that when I, I say, you know, we prohibit them, I'll give the example of the pontoon boat that was parked up on Harrison Circle. I watched that for a week or two before approaching that person, hoping that, you know, it was just a temporary type thing. They were doing something, because it just showed up, it normally was parked up on, on their parking area. So if we were to pass something like this, it wouldn't mean that you couldn't bring your camper in front of your house for a couple hours, load it up, and go take your family home on a camping trip. So, um, that's how I would plan to enforce something like that.
So you're wanting, I'm sorry, you're just wanting a little more clarity, but still allow the leeway, your judgment, as opposed to, uh, a strict town-wide no? Am I understanding that correctly?
No, I, I, I am asking you to consider a strict no, but I would not, I would allow temporary parking, you know, whether, if we wanted to award it for eight hours, twelve hours, I'm just saying, if it became a permanent parking issue or a permanent parking place for said camper, then we would come in and I would come in and say, you know, we can't have that, you have to find alternative park. So I'm not, I have a problem with something temporary, unless it's an obvious obstruction that is gonna cause issues.
So I know we've talked, we've talked about this, and I've, I've given this a lot of thought, and I think what we should do is put this, have a committee to look over this, you know, our parking regulations and to try and pull things a bit more together. And, um, I need someone on this board, uh, to, I was hoping it was gonna be Leo, but she's not here tonight. I talked to Ashley, he said he would be interested in, in being on it. Uh, I'd, I'd like you to be part of it as well, and, uh, then find another couple people from in the town and, and talk to the people, because it's gonna affect, this is gonna affect a lot of people a lot different ways. Some of them for their livelihood because they've got their, their trailers parked on the street, uh, because that's, you know, for their business, others for their recreation. That's my thought, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
Well, I mean, we put a committee together, my, my concern is, is from a public safety aspect. I mean, there are a lot of roads where you get one car on both sides, you can't get a fire truck down that road. You can't get a wide-body ambulance down that road. I know, for instance, Baker Farms, they don't allow parking in that situation, because that's another space where you have cars on both sides, there's no getting any equipment down that road. So, um, I, I think I like the idea of, and I mentioned it, we may get it clear, hey, these are the rules, here's what it is, as long as we still give Scott some discretion on, you know, trying to be fair to everybody, I don't think, but, um, it's, there's a, a public safety issue we have to look at. If you wanna put a committee here, that's fine. Uh, my only suggestion for that committee would be a mandated period of time. I don't want this to become a, a six-month-a-year process to do, um, which, you know, when you start getting committees together, things don't necessarily get answered as quickly as we might like, but I'm fine with that, but like I said, I think there needs to be a timeframe.
So, I, I'm kinda pretty much in agreement with you, but I've got a question, so what, for putting a committee together, what's your goal for them to, to achieve?
To look over our ordinances, take these suggestions, and then try and figure out what our ordinance should ultimately look like.
Our parking ordinances.
Parking ordinances, yes.
How many parking ordinances do we have?
We've got, it's like three or four pages. I'm just talking about two specific, uh, a specific situation. We've got lots of, lots of different ones, but.
And I guess, of course, we're pretty much gonna have to have a attorney involved in at least something, at least part of this.
It'd be easy to write once you do the hard work, because the hard work is exactly what you're discussing. And there's a blue million different parking ordinances around.
Right.
The state that you could.
So we need to make, we need to figure out what makes sense, most sense for, for Dave, because it, there is a lot of diversification within this town.
I think, uh, I think I strongly agree, we need to be able to get emergency vehicles, obviously, anywhere they need to go without running over vehicles.
Right.
On each side of the road, so, um, I'd have to.
Would you, would you? Would you wanna head it up?
No. Thank you. I'd ride, I'd ride the town, see what it looks like out there, I'll do that. I don't wanna, I'm not, I don't wanna hit up no committee.
Well, Steve's pretty busy.
Yeah. We'll do it, we'll do it, she'd be happy to do it.
All right, well, she's not here, it'd be easy, it'll be easy to appoint her, right?
Hell, she's right.
All right. We'll talk, we'll talk till late, uh, is, are you okay with doing that, having a committee?
As long as we set us, us, some kind of a time frame.
Well, why, why don't you tell us what that time is, Steve?
Well, I mean, we don't even have, have, we've got people for it yet, so I, I would say, once the committee sits, the, you know, be no more than, I don't know, sixty days, ninety days, I mean. days, I mean, I don't, I don't know how, how to determine how long it's gonna take every people to make a decision.
Recommendation to the council by the July meeting?
Fine with me if you think it's doable. Ashley, do you think that's gonna be doable for a group of people?
I don't know.
I don't know, I just heard sixty days.
Well, let's.
I may, I may get on in once I drive the town, see what we're talking about here.
Well, let's do this, let's. Let, let's talk to Leah, see how soon we can get this meeting together and see how, you know, if they, if we can get them moving quickly, then we can, I mean, we're kinda out of the blue on this, so I really wasn't expecting to set up, you know, I don't know how long this could take them. I would say we need to get something done by, you know, later than August, because I'm, he's still gonna have the same issues he's got now.
It's summertime.
Right.
You all kinds of stuff's gonna happen.
Going in the winter, that, that problem, either, well, some of the recreational stuff will start to disappear, but we'll still have businesses leaving stuff out there and, and I don't wanna impact, I mean, I know a lot of people have RVs and things like that. I want them to have, you know how people enjoy their life, but we still have to be careful about the streets. And I, and I can, I know that every time I break up something, you know, hey, this needs to be done, the first thing I hear from everybody is, oh, well, there's this one and that one and this one and that one. And it's like, well, that's not the answer, so.
So we'll appoint Leah and attempt to have it done by, by August?
Well, I think she's, then you suggest have some come back in July.
That's what I said, I, I don't know that anybody agreed with it, that's just, that was just a suggestion.
All right, let's try for, let's shoot for July and then see what happens.
Are you making more appointments to this committee tonight? Are you appointing Ashley if he's receptive to that tonight?
Are you receptive to that?
Yeah.
I mean, they may not have an answer in July, I would say, but for sure by August, but at least in July, give us an update where things stand and then say we'll have a decision, something for you at the August meeting, something like that, how about that as a compromise?
You're okay with the?
So you're me, Ashley, Leah?
I'll be there.
And that's the committee?
I wasn't volunteering, Steve.
I know you weren't.
I wasn't volunteering, because I know you're busy.
As long as we don't do it, it's third, third Tuesday or Wednesday, because I've already booked up for that one, but, all right, well, if Leah can do it.
We'll let you guys pull this, pull it together, okay?
She'll have Leah contact.
Okay, I'll contact, I'll contact.
A meeting time.
I'll, I'll contact Leah and she, and she can put the meeting and stuff together, okay?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you. Any questions?
Next thing then is the Shady Lane cul-de-sac. Okay. When Alicia was still our attorney, I'd noticed that the Shady Lane cul-de-sac was not shown on the town's property, as town, as town property on the county GIS map. I'd asked her about that and because I had understood it had been deeded to the town prior to the town paying to have it paved. As I remember, she had also thought it had been deeded over. Earlier this year, I brought that to the attention of our attorney, as the GIS map still had not changed. On March twenty-fourth, they suggested that a title search be done to determine the legal status of the property. I authorized them to do the title search. As it turns out, it belongs to Ron Kohler and Cindy Marsh. That property was paved with one hundred percent town money for twenty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. No CCMG funds were used. The work was approved by the prior council in June of two thousand twenty-two, and that approval was based either on misinformation or disinformation. So I wanna tell you what the difference between those two things are. Misinformation is false or inaccurate information, in other words, getting the facts wrong. And disinformation is false information which is deliberately intended to mislead. My first thought was that there are two possible ways of dealing with the situation. One was to accept the deed after the fact. The other is to have the state board of accounts or the state police investigate, investigate to see if any charges are warranted, charges that could possibly result in felony. I was thinking that neither action should be decided upon tonight, instead, we should wait until at least next month's meeting, so the council can further investigate the situation, and so the public has an opportunity to weigh in with their representatives to determine our path forward. But then I discovered this Indiana code. It's a requirement to report. Indiana Code five eleven dash one dash twenty-seven states, a public officer who has actual knowledge of or reasonable cause to believe that there has been a misappropriation of public funds or assets of, of the public office include, including information obtained as a result of a police report, an internal audit finding, or another source indicating that a misappropriation has occurred, shall immediately send written notice of the misappropriation to the state board of accounts and the prosecuting attorney serving in the area governed by the political subdivision. So at this point, I guess I wanted to ask our attorney, now that we know this information, should we contact state board of accounts and the prosecuting attorney so they can figure, figure out what exactly has happened here?
Have you got that? I, I'm not familiar with the statute, have you got the printout of that?
Yeah.
So actual knowledge or reasonable cause to believe, you know, those are two different things, actual knowledge, we all know what that means, reasonable cause to believe is something less, I think that's really the, the key issue, if you, if you have that, it imposes a duty on any public official. But the question is, what do you have? I don't know what, I don't know what the facts are, you just detailed what the facts were? And so I assume that's in the minutes and, you know, verifiable, but I don't have any of those facts myself.
Well, so the facts are that the property that was paved with town money does not belong to the town.
But the intent was that it was to be deeded over, so my guess is that it was.
Well, how do we know that that was the intent? Because it was never.
Come on, Mark, what the crap are you trying to pull here?
Easy.
Trying to pull in?
Let's just keep this civil. So I understand, so was the property deeded to the town?
No, no.
But it was supposed to be, it was supposed to be and that was the intent. That was the intent, that was discussed.
Hey, hey, please, let me, so it was, it, there was an intent to deede, do we have paperwork showing the intent? I mean, I thought I saw something in this pack of stuff, and I'm just looking through it now, because it's just a lot of it here.
Yeah, so the only thing that was deeded over was there was a small section over on Wesleyan Drive that was deeded over.
But that was done after the, after the one on Shady Lane was done, and we're talking about the one on Shady Lane.
They were both paved at the same time.
Okay.
I think paperwork just got missed, but if, if that's indeed a fact.
I don't know. I mean, it's been a couple of years now, this has been, that, you know, and I'm pretty sure the property owners keep pretty close eye on what their property is and the GIS map. I know there's been a lot of, a lot of things been happening, happening up in that area.
You're making, you're, you're tiptoeing around some dangerous area, Mark, I think you need to be careful.
I don't.
Well, so, again.
I, I, I know the facts right here, Carl, I'm afraid that you may not just wanna accept the, accept the fact that the town does not own that property, but the town did pay to have that property done.
Yes, but the intent was that it would be deeded over, and if it didn't happen, I'm saying the likelihood is that was a paperwork issue, not a try, an attempt to steal from the town.
I don't know.
I, I can't even believe you're.
To a similar, I mean, I, I don't know, Eric, I mean, I don't know how we, before we start accusing anybody of anything, I'd like to have a little more, a little more in the way of, if we've got, if we're supposed to do that, if it's something that just didn't get filed because of whatever reason, if it's, if it's.
Well, that's what I think, that's what I think an investigation would find out.
A legal investigation.
A legal investigation?
You are unbelievable.
So who did, who pulled, so you did this to GIS, who, did you say your attorneys had already been involved in this?
I'm sorry?
You say our attorneys had already been involved?
Yeah, we recommended a title search, just so it was clear who owned it, you could tell from GIS.
Right.
And it was consistently GIS, but that's not always correct, you know?
Okay. So if, if the intent is it was supposed to be done and for some reason it didn't get done, if we get it, then that solves the issue?
Well, if, it would transfer the title if there was a deed, I don't know that there was one ever prepared, but it's a pretty simple deed to do.
Okay, so it sounds like it's a clarable error that we could just fix with getting the paperwork done and then the town's property and then it's already done, right?
I, I don't know what the state board of accounts would do, they're not looking for trouble in general, things that get solved, I think they're probably not worried about.
Again, I was.
Call to the attorney at the time.
What's that?
Call to the attorney at the time, she could probably answer that question.
Yeah, and you said that she thought the deed had been done.
She thought.
Because usually that would be the town would do the deed. Doesn't sound like she remembers exactly what happened since she thought it was done.
So let's see, who did, who did the deed for the, the other little section of town over on Wesley?
Oh, there you go. Was there another one transferred?
Yeah, that, that one did the transfer. Seventy-two pages here. So you would think that Robert Lizinski would, would have done both of these at the same time, because both things happened at the same time.
Same owner.
Same owner.
Have we talked to him or her?
Bob, Robert, yeah.
Yeah. Do they have a record of either of both documents or just the one?
Well, there, there is no record of the other document, because it never, it never was.
Well, but if he created a deed and it just didn't get filed, then he would have a record of creating a deed, wouldn't he?
He'd have, he'd have a form that maybe never got signed if he, if he prepared it, he'd have it on the computer.
I don't, I don't know, if we, we, I mean, obviously, we really should think there's wrongdoing, then we have to report it, that's, that's the way the law works, but I. It just seems a little punitive to me. I'd like to just see the issue, the error being fixed.
Well, you're, you're making an assumption that it was an error.
You're making an assumption that it wasn't.
I'm not. I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying we do need to find out. I, I, I'm saying, I believe we're obligated to let somebody find out and for us not to make the assumptions.
This is the only way to find out?
What's that?
This is the only way to find out, is to get an attorney involved, find out?
Well, you could certainly ask Mr. Lizinski if he knows and.
And that's what you should get, check whoever.
I, I, yeah, I mean, I'm, is there, I think what Rocky's, and she corrected me by putting her words here now, but what I'm hearing is that there's gotta be a way to investigate short of taking it to the state and prosecutors. Is there an internal, do we have access to an investigative service of some kind internally? I mean, I'm looking, sorry, no?
Not for, not for this kind of matter.
Okay.
Not in the wood.
It just, it, it seems very strange that one would have been done and the other one wasn't.
Well, one thing I, I've seen, not as a council member, but as somebody sitting in the audience over and over again, is documents don't always flow through this building as well as they should. I can remember a, a, a de annexation that something didn't get filed, and I can remember other things were things didn't get filed, wrongdoing or not, I don't know, I just, for you?
Well, how about if I do this, I'll call, I'll call up Mr. Lizinski and I'll ask him, and then I'll report back to him.
Got to be a starter.
Got to be that something.
Okay.
Yeah, if it, so, yeah, nobody ever talked to me about it, I think we can next steps from there.
All right. And that's what I'll do.
Appreciate that.
Uh, any other business?
Um, no, I think Kurt hit on, we're waiting for the meters to be retired over there. Turns out the vaccine tool, I'm one of them, we didn't know, so it's a good thing we didn't start doing that over there, that could have been a mess. I think that's about all I've got.
Did they indicate anything, what, nationwide after the meter?
Scott called it, I mean, I mean, Kurt followed up with them earlier this, yesterday, and they're saying sometime between the twenty-sixth and the thirty-first, you know, it's center point, we'll have somebody there between this, this day and that day, between those hours and these hours.
That's to remove the.
To remove the meter before we can go in there and get the con, everything else has been taken care of. Asbestos has been removed, MNC is working on getting the permits taken care of, and as soon as the meters are gone and he gets the permits, we're good to go.
That's what I was asking, if we had a timeframe after the meters were removed.
Yeah, my hope is to get it done as quickly as possible, make it either usable or at least pretty, pretty early.
Okay. Any other old business?
Public comment?
Come up, say your name, please.
I'm John Swick, that's seven forty-six Shady Lane Court, and I just wanted to have a little positive thing. When I was on the board, we used to have to go through the prints to find the valves, even though I was here when they had it, you know, and we, we double checked, Max Wetbach and I. And I can see what happens, things get misplaced, disappears, whatever it is, but we used to have a, a guideline in there that told where all the valves were and locations. But I do think that since I'm an old timer, the GPS is better than what we had back in the day, and I appreciate you guys moving up from the old timers to the new stuff, say, and I appreciate what you've done there. Getting back to the, the cul-de-sac, I'm sure there's some documentation someplace that the board approved at, and it was supposed to be turned over to the town, but I don't know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and, and I, I do have to say, I mean, Mark has been really pushing hard on getting those valves and getting that stuff done, and we, I just toot our own horn a little bit, we really used the COVID money we had and really, I think, set the town up for, to be in really good shape moving forward, but, you know, we have extra valves, we have extra equipment, we've got newer vehicles, so we've moved a, a lot of things ahead, and that's under his leadership at this point, so.
Any other public comment?
One more.
Yes. This is third time, Mark, in two years you're harassing our family, and I know it'll never stop. Everything's documented, you guys need to talk to Alicia, our old town attorney. When we had that CMG grant money, they wanted to do Shady Lane and the cul-de-sac up there, and apparently we've owned that for thirty, forty years, and it was a cul-de-sac when we were there, but they wanted to round it out and put a new service on it, just like Wesleyan Drive cul-de-sac. So they have, the only way they could do it. So they have, the only way they could do it is that we donated the land, which we did for a dollar. We donated that. Wesleyan Drive, we donated half, and the church donated half. That was on private property, so they could do that. Just like, as I donated a lot of stuff back there. Anyway, Alicia drew up the things. And as my understanding, you can look at all the minutes, look at all the meetings, it's talked about, we talked about it. And we'd be glad to donate it over, and here it is. It's filed in the, recorded in Tipping Canoe County. Recorder of, of January of twenty twenty-two, both cul-de-sacs. I've never read it before, but I had my wife read it. She said, there's, we've, we've turned it over before they could do anything. It had to be turned over to them. We didn't ask for them to do it on our property, private property. We donated property to the town at Dayton, Mark, just like down Shady Lane, down on Wesleyan Drive. And just like the water on the west side of the road and everything else, we donated it all, every bit of it. And you're trying to take this and turn it into something absolutely ugly. Now, it wasn't, you were on the board. You were back there on the board when this stuff was done. Just like you mentioned the pumpkin garden. Maybe you should have checked those valves. Maybe you should have helped. But, you know, the thing is, Mark, you're turning it, you know what it is. We donated everything. We don't try to get anything free. We've never tried to get anything free. I've used, I've donated my salary for all these years. I've never, we've never, we've donated hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't want anything free, and I don't want, they had it before they could pave it. It's up to the lawyers at the time and the grant money people. It had to be turned over to them before they would pave it. And that's what we did. So look into it, but I'll, I'll give you the, you can call me sometime here. I want to keep these two, but here's the recordings of both places.
Do you have, do you have the recorded deed there?
Yeah.
And the, the county does not have a recorded?
Well, that's their problem. Here it is, right here by the damn county, Mark. Jeez. No, nobody's going to get it. I'll get you copies, because I don't trust some of you on there. You'll destroy it. Because you're out to get me. You've been harassing me for two years. No, he's, what he's doing now is harassment.
If you've got the copies, that'll solve the issue.
Well, look at all the tapes. Look at what the lawyer did. Look at what Mark voted on himself.
So, um.
Jeez.
Yeah, and it was not paid for with CCMG money.
Yeah, it was paid for by the town, and we went, we were doing it at the same time.
We'll look into it.
Town Taylor, seven thirty-four Wallace Street, uh, way lighter subject. That group that came up earlier that wanted to do the music, we used to do the movies and stuff. What we would do is ask the town vendors to help sponsor each of, like, the day to help us so they could have like the free cone of ice for the kids and all that. So I was thinking like maybe you guys could look into that. It was, Michelle was a clerk at the time. I'm sure Bridget or Cindy, whoever your guys' vendors are, like PF and S was really great. We would just set a certain amount. It's, they only have four events. Then you invest like five hundred dollars. You can get three or four of your people, five hundred dollars, and you can do, uh, make it more enticing, you know, get the families up here. If you give them free cone of ice, they can cost two hundred dollars to rent that truck. And they give out the tokens. It's just a good, easy way to get some, you know, to bring something to the community without it just being a fuss. So, something that I told them, they should maybe kind of bring that up to you guys individually. Or, or if you're okay with it, like, the, you know, the clerk or Bridget or whoever wants to kind of be in charge of maybe like funding events that way, because I know there are bicentennial's coming up, and maybe we want money, and they're trying to raise money, but you know, there's not always money, but there's not a marketing part in the, the budget. I don't think there is anymore. But if you could just get your vendors to throw in a little bit for each of those things, you could do a lot of stuff without us in there.
Any other public comment? Council comment?
Rocky?
Looking forward to that, getting that meter up, getting that tore down over there.
So like, try to pursue an idea or two. Carla?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so, uh, found out that it looked like there's, uh, there's parking added onto over at Troy's Barbecue over here. And our, uh, our ordinance reads that if you add additional parking anywhere that has to be done with a hard surface, which would be asphalt, concrete, or clean crushed stone. And fortunately, the stone that was put down there was not clean. It's used stone. Uh, I know the contractor was informed that, of what needed to be done, and apparently decided that they were going to ignore that. So I guess I'm going to ask you what, what we should do going forward.
Is that a town ordinance or is that the APC?
Uh, well, there's probably, there's probably a couple of violations there. I think the APC needs to be contacted so that there was a permit. And then I think additionally, and then there is the town ordinance as well.
Well, you gotta give them a notice and, and it's a fine that's attached to failure to follow town code and, uh, zone code. Now, you might try APC, just see if they would do it for you. I don't know whether they would or not.
Well, the, whatever their, if there's a violation for them, then they'll have to deal with it. And then the town, the town we've decided is going to deal with the town's ordinance, we're going to start, we're going to enforce the town's ordinances. So I'll give you a few on that, okay?
And is, is, is the project done? Do we know if it's completed?
I don't know if it's done, but I know that what was done over there was not, was in violation of what the town did. So, maybe they just, maybe they just would have put that, maybe they just would have put that gravel down, then they're going to take it up again and do the cleanst.
Can I answer your question since I'm put in the parking lot? Is that okay?
You brought it up.
Gotcha. Here's another harassment again. He's, he's out to get us. That's always doing. I'll take it all out and leave stinking mud in there for you. You wanted it nice looking. What the hell does it care if the subsurface underneath? Kurt told me it had that four inches of stone. It's going to have four inches of clean stinking stone. Who cares? But it's going to have additional four or five inches of stone that came from a parking lot. So it's got, it's pit run with stone. So it'll probably end up having six, seven inches of stone. Now, if you don't like it or want to harass me or make me take it out, I won't put nothing in there, and I'll make that look like a stinking hellhole for you.
Can I ask you a question, Ron?
Because all you're doing is harassing.
Can I ask you a question? So you're not, so this isn't completed?
No, hell no, it's not completed.
Did you go?
Did you ask him before you brought this to the council?
No. No, he's not.
Okay, so, okay, so that's the problem. You, if you would have asked, you would have known. When he asked, when Steve asked you the question, you said you didn't know.
Did you get your permit from the APC?
I don't understand that you have to have a permit to replace the gravel that was always already in there before the house burnt down. But if you do, I'll be glad to get one. I've gotten a thousand permits, Mark.
Someone who's been, who's been involved in this for twenty years.
I don't have to get one, no, because there was a parking lot there. Driveways, Mark. There wasn't.
No, there was.
You know?
A week ago.
Did you get it? Where's your permit for putting your gravel parking lot? There is no permit on file, right? Is there a permit for you?
There is not. I do not own a gravel parking lot.
You do too, on your property, that you're trying to get the pavement, that's.
Ron.
Whose property is it?
It's the town's property.
No, it isn't. Mark, every property in front of our house is a utilities right away. It's not the, so if it's the town's, I can park my nursery trucks up there, my tractors and park them there. Piss everybody off, right? And everybody can park everywhere in town in front of everybody's house and everybody's, you're lying to everybody out here. It's a utility easement out there. It's not the town's, Mark, but you still, okay, that's the town's property.
That's enough.
That's the town's property right over there.
Ron.
It's in the easement.
Ron, please check with APC about a permit and then finish.
Well, this is, this is harassment. This is crap.
You're saying that's fine, but I'm saying if there's a permit required, please get the permit, and then just finish the project.
And I'll tell you one other thing. A year ago, on the phone, he told me that he's either going to put, hook Shady Lane to Wesleyan Drive and hook that water system together, or I won't be able to sell any of my land and split up my lots. And I told him that's blackmail, and he hung up on me. And that's why he had Nikki Beaver's last meeting bring up about that damn lupus, because he's out to get me and my land.
No, I'm out to do what's walk.
No, you're not, Mark. You're, you're pissed at me.
All right, can we just bring this in? The lawyer's getting mad, and I want these folks to deal with it.
Any other council comment? This meeting is adjourned.
We got papers to sign, Vicky?
Take your umbrella, will you?